Let me ready start the city council meeting tonight. Before we start, we're going to have the pledge, and we're going to have an invocation. And the invocation will be given by Donald Gibson from City First Baptist Church tonight. We're pleased that you're here. Whether or not you want to participate in the invocation doesn't make any difference on the reason that you came here to see the council tonight. And the invocation is given for the benefit of the council. We invite anybody that would like to come and do that invocation to call my office, and we'll be glad to sign you up. And we take all denominations, and it doesn't make any difference. So with that, I'll ask everybody to stand. We'll have the pledge, and I, Councilwoman Nancy.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
You'll remain standing. Now, we have a lucky lady who works for us, Diana Wright, her sister passed away yesterday morning. Memorial service is on Thursday, and I'd like you to remember her. Is there anybody that missed? Everybody else is in pretty good shape tonight. Thank you.
Let's pray. Heavenly Father, we acknowledge that you are the God of this city. We want to thank you for blessing us with a 200-year history. We are so grateful for our past, and we anticipate an even brighter future. I thank you for these council members and their willingness to serve. I pray that you would grant them your wisdom, a unity of purpose and spirit, and uncommon courage as they make decisions for our community. Tonight, our hearts go out to the family of Diana Wright. Lord, I pray that they will know you as a God of mercy and comfort during this difficult time, and we pray all of this in Jesus' name. Amen.
First thing on our agenda will be YouTube. Keep your cell phone and be sure that it's on vibrate or turned off. Secondly, we'll have roll call.
Councilwoman Rish.
Present.
Councilwoman Weber.
Present.
Councilwoman Shomel.
Present.
Councilwoman Nobby.
Here.
Councilwoman Montgomery.
Present.
Councilwoman Creach.
Present.
Councilwoman Stevens.
Here.
Let the record show that all seven council members are here tonight. They have a forum, and we can do business. The reading and answer of the last council meeting, that will be August of 19, 2013.
Ron, make a motion to pass the minutes as presented.
Second.
We have a motion on the floor to pass the minutes, or they were sent out to the council paper. Are there any additions or corrections? None appearing. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. The minutes stand approved. Thank you. Welcome to all of you folks tonight. We appreciate it. We're going to run these pretty expeditiously, I think. First, we're going to have Holly now. Holly, here. I don't know how you got to the top of the list, but you're right up there.
All right. It still makes me nervous to come up here.
Oh, it shouldn't make you nervous. We're friendly.
Yeah, you are. I was here before. I think you all know who I am and what I do. I represent the Haven, and we are a youth-focused ministry slash young adult program, just in general, that has been around now for, coming up on four years. And this month, we are making a huge transition because we are moving into our own building, for real this time. Last time, we had some unexpected things that we thought we were all in the clear, but this time Troy has been with me and helped me with this, and we will be in there and begin in October. And one of the very first things that is going to start, and I'm really kind of excited about it, and I actually brought some of these, I'll let you guys have them, is we're moving towards having a mentoring program right after school, partnership with the school. They'll get dropped off from the high school, and we'll work in partnership with Baytown Transportation to get them home. I don't know if they have enough for everyone, but you can share.
Sure.
But essentially, that's going to start right away, and then we will also have some drug classes for teens that's going to be lined up, and then we'll continue to have fuel, and we're going to grow more programming as it allows. Lots of great things are in the works. But to start off in October, that's, we'll be using the building five days of seven.
What building? I'm sorry, I didn't need it.
No, no problem. It was the old Chicken Coop. It's 111 West Seventh Street. It's a lot smaller, but we're going to make it work. It's about 2,200 square feet, and it'll enable us to get going, maybe even for the next, we're hoping for a couple of years. Any questions about that?
Right down here by the phone shop.
Right by here.
Okay.
Right by family video.
Okay.
It's right downtown, and just have already got some great partnerships going. Got church, several churches that are sponsoring our monthly expenses, and we are moving forward. Literally, our stuff's in there. And I'm here tonight because our first, like, I mean, it was kind of was on our last list. Our first need is a place where people can sit down. And so I've kind of gone through a couple of different, like, school pricing sheets and different websites online, and we're hoping to get, I want it to be a fun place. I want it to be a place that kids are excited about coming to and bringing their friends. So I want it to look nice, but at the same time, be affordable. And we need, because the space is smaller, we need something stackable and something that we can kind of shuffle what we're doing really quick. The first thing I have is chairs for 100 kids, because that's about what we run. And that is $200, and like, I mean, $2,000. And like before, I come with options, so if you don't like what I offer, there's other options. Yeah, I'll pass that on. They're real contemporary looking, but they were the least expensive also, so it worked out double-sided. The thing that I need the most, and it kind of, it makes me even nervous to mention it because I know that they're pricey, and that is cafeteria-style tables. Our space, if you've been in there, the walls are gone now. It's not real, it's super long, but it's not super wide, and so I need tables that go up and down really quick so we can open them up and close them, put them away, and roll out a ping-pong table. And for just the fire side of things, we're not allowed to have anything, like, fixed or permanent, so it can't be booths or anything that's heavy. We just need to be able to kind of tuck them away. So I have cafeteria tables. We have space for six, five will work, and they're kind of pricey. And I'm just going to tell you that I've done a lot of shopping, trying to find Craigslist, anywhere that I could find them, they were already, like, something that we could buy used, not had any luck, and we're kind of getting down to where we're moving in a month. And so I need tables. Five of them with shipping would run around $6,000, which makes my heart pitter-patter.
Why are they so expensive?
I think these are convenient. I mean, we need bench.
It shows a picture, huh?
Oh, it didn't show a picture. I'm sorry. It's basically, they fold up in the middle, they open up, and they have bench seating. Kind of allows more people to...
So kind of like they got in cafeteria.
Just like what they have in a cafeteria. One person can flip the benches over and squish it up, and they push aside real quick. And that's kind of my, that's why I'm here to present. I don't know.
Okay, 100 chairs plus the tables.
Yeah.
Will the chairs be used for when the tables are folded?
Well, there's kind of, it's a long space, and so on one end, we'll have it set up, like, with a stage and people that can speak at it, and there'll be people sitting at it. And then on the other side, we serve them a meal, and it'll be, the tables will be over there on that side.
How many can you seat at five tables?
At five tables, it's going to be 50, 60. Some of them will still have to be in other parts of the building. We know it's going to be tighter. That's why, as soon as they stand up, we can swipe up a table and get it out of the way. It's going to be, it'll be tight, but we can make it work. I mean, we know that we're going to, we needed to start our spot, and this is where we're going to start.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
What if we've seen Mike Bottomley? He has stackable chairs, and he has folding-type tables. See, maybe Mike could help us out?
Is any of their Visteon plant?
I know that they have something heavier that's got some mold on the chair form at the Visteon plant. I don't, they think they're too bulky. I think they'll take up too much space.
We have the white tables, the folding tables. I feel, no, I'm glad the building, the 4-H building, the Roberts building, and we thought about, in fact, I even asked the Board of Works today to consider giving some of those to you, but you don't want those.
We, they were standard choosy.
Those chairs are stackable. It's hard for us to sit here in our poor condition and buy new tables and chairs for you when we know we need tables and chairs in our own building.
Okay.
I mean, it's very difficult, at least to this for me. This council has to say so, though. Thank you.
Holly, and I, not to, but to the mayor of it, but, you know, we have an obligation with the taxpayers and so forth. We have obligation to our parks, and we would like to help you. And having said that, like I say, I think Mike, I borrowed them at the transfer station before. Those are light fiberglass type tables, lightweight, and he has the stackable chairs. But your heart's in the right place. It would be just difficult for me to vote, to spend a great deal of money to do this. I mean, we give something, Mike, I think he'd love to help you out.
Mike, can you come up here a minute?
While he's warming up, I was just looking on eBay, and I found a couple of folding-rolling 12-foot cafeteria tables from schools for $375.
Where did you find them?
Right here.
Because I'm glad that...
Then you have to pay shipping.
Where are they at? Where in the country?
They're in Waterford, Michigan, and shipping, whatever that would cost. They have two available, and there's another one that has five available for $400.
Well, I'm...
How many can seat at each one?
Yeah.
12. How many seats are those? And these are folding-rolling.
That's kind of what you're talking about.
That's kind of what I'm talking, and they fold up like this.
Fold up like that.
I'm glad to look at them and be glad to, that's, I'm not...
Good to have your own eBay. I mean, yeah, just on eBay, I looked up cafeteria tables, and some came up, so you might want to look it up.
I'm glad to, yeah, I've used the school, like, what the school has used in the past, and then I went online. I guess I didn't go eBay, though.
Yeah.
Mike, if we...
One last question.
She wants a...
Sir.
You go ahead.
I just found eight for $275.
Eight for $200? That's...
And they are cafeteria tables, folding tables with bench seats. They were in a daycare and a restaurant. There, you want to look at it?
This is exactly what I'm looking for. Unless they're like little kid love.
I mean, you can even call them and all that stuff. If they're in a daycare, they're probably going to love it.
They have to be...
Says daycare or restaurant. Maybe small people eat there.
No, but that's, I mean, I'm open. I just, it's just...
Could we give her 100 of our chairs and order new chairs for the 4-H building?
Yeah, we can do that.
Are they stackable?
Yes, it's those, the green ones.
Okay.
They're pretty nice chairs. That would be nice for your stage area.
And what about the tables? Do you have tables or no?
Nothing, yeah, but...
We don't have those that break in half with the benches on. We've got the white tables that fit the chairs.
Well, and we would make anything work. I just, I feel like you need to know that we will make anything work, but when you're looking for it, that's...
What's the diameter of the tables, the round tables?
60 inches.
How much?
60.
Are they all round, or do we have any long ones?
We have some long ones, too. There's six footers, eight footers.
Probably the long ones would sit there better.
Yeah, longer will fit this one.
You have to bring the chairs back, eat, and then take the chairs back up and put up at the stage.
Oh, that's fine. We talked about doing that, too, if we had to. I mean, like, in general, when we were trying to figure out what we needed to do.
Well, I personally think we would be better suited for the taxpayer if we did that, rather than, and I did get the Board of Works to approve that today if you wanted to do it. They approved that.
I have another question. Have you talked to Troy, Tipton, on how many people can be in? Okay.
Yeah, we're good this time.
Yeah, good.
Well, Debbie, Nancy, do you have anything to say about this you want?
No, I just want to thank her for being involved.
Well, thank you.
And we definitely want to help.
You know, I think we needed to give her some money, though, to help purchase some tables. I mean, I really think this will be a transforming factor in our city, and I think that's something we ought to think about. I mean, even if it's $2,000, maybe help offset the cost of the tables or something like that. I think, I think that's something we need to do, $2,000 or $3,000. So I'll just make a motion right now. I move to appropriate $3,000 to Haven for tables.
Okay, you want to take that a riverboat?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
We got a motion and a second. $3,000, is that what you said? Then do you want to give her some chairs from up there?
Yes, sir.
Maybe we could find 100 chairs.
100 chairs?
Is that what you wanted?
Yeah, I mean, just...
Is that what you need, 50 or 100?
Oh, I need 100, but we'll move them, we'll have to move them, but it'll be okay.
Well, he's talked about giving you some money to buy these tables while he's in it, too.
Oh, that would be fabulous.
Yeah, so if we could get the chairs and the $3,000.
The only thing is, we're going to have to get ours ordered and get them in.
Should take very long. These tables, I think, are a lot more...
Then we're going to have to appropriate money to buy chairs at the park.
Wait just a minute, we got a motion, and do we have a second?
Nancy, second.
Nancy, second. Okay, so we have a motion on the floor. Okay, we need to deal with that motion. Go ahead.
We have questions on the floor?
Sure, question.
Gabe, I understand where your heart is. I understand that, but I would rather see us take the city's money and buy Mike my city park tables and then give Holly the ones that are, they're nice.
But you don't have the tables that she's looking for, right?
We don't have the round cafeteria tables.
So you don't have that stock?
Well, I mean, and I understand, but Holly said you could make it do, right?
Yeah, we will, we will, I really think for the space, and I mean, I'm going to pull Troy, it's a long, long place. I don't know that round tables will work. I think they'll have to find, they have to be...
They have to be eight footers, I know.
Yeah.
Do you have a place to store them?
They're going to have to stay out.
After they're left, you can just lay them against the wall.
They'll have to be against the wall, yeah. I don't have, I don't have great, I don't have storage there, but, yeah.
Well, we have a motion on the floor to put $3,000 into this to buy the kind of tables you want.
What would be more important, the chairs or the tables first?
Probably chairs, because we need to, we can sit at our chairs and eat.
I think we can take care of that in the next motion by giving her some of our chairs and just buy new chairs if they're for our tables.
Right, but we're still putting out money either way.
Huh?
We're still putting out money either way.
We'll put out $3,000 this way.
Right.
This motion costs.
Seems to me we ought to wait and see what our tables are, and then appropriate that amount.
If we do that, though, we're going to be, we're going to be way behind. She needs them next month, right?
I do, but...
What about the cafeteria-type tables that fold up that have bench seats?
That's what I really want. That's what she had.
That's what she wants, yeah.
That's what this is.
And that's why I think gave the motion for $3,000, she can get them off eBay. But she still needs 100 chairs.
Did you say that you could get them for off eBay? Didn't you say $275 apiece or something?
$395 for these I just found, but there are some other ones on there, yes. You all look.
Okay, well, we need to dispose of this motion. If you're ready for the question, are you ready?
I'm ready all night.
Anybody else want to discuss the question?
I just don't think we have that information.
Okay, the motion is that we appropriate from the riverboat fund, which will take an additional appropriation, so it's going to have to lay over two weeks, for $3,000 for tables for the fuel. We'll have a roll call vote.
Councilwoman Rish?
No, I just, I would, I want more information on these tables first.
You're just getting the money right now, right? This is just the money.
Just the money.
Just money. Yes.
Councilman Shomel?
I agree with Connie. I need some more facts and figures and some kind of a solid number to go on, so no...
Councilman Nobby?
Yes.
Councilwoman Montgomery?
No.
Councilman Creach?
No.
Councilwoman Stevens?
Yes, and may I request that Holly explain exactly what she does, what this group is all about.
Soon as we get through this, we'll do that. What's the...
Four nos, three s's.
Four nos, three s's. The next motion fails.
How old are your chairs, Mike, that we're talking about?
As old as the millis that have been open. I mean, they got nicks in them, and four, five years old, six.
I just wondered. I mean, you know, on last year.
Let's go to the fact of the chair, let's go to the fact of the chairs now. Mike says he can give her 100 stackable chairs that she could use at her stage, and then we would order new chairs. And you must remember, we'd have to appropriate money then to buy those new chairs because he's got to have those, and we couldn't take those down there until...
He's going to use them every week.
Yeah, his command.
Yeah.
Is there anybody here that's in favor of taking 100 of those chairs from the 4-H building and giving it to her?
Absolutely.
Let me ask, tell you one thing before we move forward. You are organized as a 501(c)(3) corporation.
We fall under chair and grand bill.
So you have your own number and all that sort of thing. Any contributions made are...
Taxing, our taxes are charged.
I need... Can the city give to her that?
Yes, to the 501(c)(3) corporation.
All right, I'll take a motion if you want to pursue this chair issue.
Can I say something?
Yes, ma'am. You're the boss.
If she could buy the tables that she wants on eBay for $400 apiece, she gets five of them, that's $2,000. If we gave her $3,000, that's enough money for her to get 50 of the chairs that she wants, plus the tables, without us having to pay...
The $3,000.
For another $3,000 for chairs for the park.
And we don't know what the cost is on those.
Why don't you look up chairs, Gary?
I'll tell you what, Holly, why don't you do this for us? I hate to make you lose two weeks. I was going to say, go get an exact price and come back here.
Okay.
But you can't do that. We'll lose two weeks.
No, she can't, she can't do it, and then if you're on eBay and wait two weeks, it's gone.
Yeah.
So that's why I thought the $3,000 made a lot of sense.
Could we make it a maximum of X number of dollars, but if she got the tables cheaper, we would go with less money? We can appropriate $3,000, and then when we get the exact cost... Well, when we get next, the next meeting, when we vote on it, when we actually bring the additional in, then you can reduce it if she doesn't need that much money.
I'm fine with, we could find it if, what Dr. Weber found. I mean, I'm fine with that completely.
We can't do $3,000 because we already voted down the motion. We'll have to change it. You can't consider the same motion in the same meeting twice.
$3,000 and more.
But you can consider a different amount if you want to. Don't all sit there and look at it.
I have a question, Ron. So we can't give, Mike can't give her 100 chairs and some tables to use?
He can.
He can, but if you give her $3,000, she has a very good potential of getting everything she needs without having us have to reimburse the park, and then the cost, we don't know.
Mike, when the chairs cost at the park?
Mike, what are you talking about?
$30 apiece?
Yeah, $27 to $32 apiece.
What do yours cost?
I think they're like, less than that, they're less than 20. Yeah, you're going to...
Can I give the council a suggestion? Why don't you ask for an additional appropriation of $4,000? Let me appoint a committee of Dr. Weber, work with her, and see if they can't get the tables she wants and the chairs she wants and get it as reasonable as possible, and we'll come back here.
Some move.
We can't consider three, but we consider more, we can consider less. Now, are we going to get, are we going to give Mike new chairs?
Now, Mike's off the table. Sorry, do you need new chairs?
We could always use tables and chairs.
But you don't really need them, right?
Your honor, my point is, and Holly's my neighbor. She knows, I mean, you know, it's not, it's just that I have, just had the issue with taking taxpayers' money, and we're doing this for a faith-based organization, and our own parks department can use tables and chairs. That's my, again, she's my neighbor. I mean, she knows this is not personal. I mean, what she's doing is wonderful. That's my...
I see what you're saying, Tom. Are you going to come to us maybe next year, Mike, and ask for new chairs? You know?
Oh, I'm sure we're going to need new chairs.
So we might as well get you the new ones.
Okay, I'll tell you what, let's, your motion didn't get a second, so we're, we're at that end here. Mike, take Holly out and hold. Let me go through some of this business, see what you can work out.
Slap around some.
Slap.
Holly, do you think you'll need all those chairs and everything right at first?
Um, no. I will say this, our numbers fluctuate with the season, and football season draws a chunk of my, my normal people that are there on Friday nights. So as the, as the school year goes, it usually climbs and it hits like 110s out. We run about 60, 80 consistently. So if I had enough to start with, that's, and then the other thing I feel like I need to just say is we are immediately going to work in partnership with the school and some other things. It's not all faith-based.
Melissa, go get my computer and take it in there to these two. Get on eBay and see what you can find.
Cafeteria tables, what it was under.
Okay, she'll find them. She's good at it.
Okay.
And come back in here in a little bit. Let us get through some of those business we're taking. You guys, if we want to go see a bowl game or something.
Just an awesome job.
Okay, we got another tough one coming up. I didn't realize until last week, I got a nice little email from Indot telling us that our ADA transition plan needed to be updated or furnished to them by the first of September. And I immediately called Jason Pop with Strand and said, what happened here? He'll explain to you where we are in this thing. It's kind of a bad deal, but we're in a pinch because we're getting federal money on this Grand Avenue project, and we stand to lose it if we don't have this transition plan in place. So Jason, take the floor.
Sure thing. Just a little bit of background, I kind of relayed this to the Board of Works earlier
Sure thing, um, just a little bit of background, I kind of relayed this to the Board of Works earlier today. Uh, ADA transition plan is a plan that a city has in place that identifies any type of access barriers within the city. Um, it then inventories those, assigns a cost to fixing the access barrier and puts them on the implementation schedule. This went into place for pretty much all municipalities that get federal aid projects such as an NDOT project. Um, back in, I think initially in the seventies and then was updated in nineteen ninety-two. Uh, so this was required for anyone that wanted, uh, federal aid projects. Um, recently in August of two thousand twelve, NDOT asked all municipalities to provide an updated or complete, um, ADA plan if they didn't have one. Going back through the documentation, the, uh, city contacted me about a week and a half ago and we did some initial site visit to try to see what all the city had. This entails public-owned facilities such as buildings as well as, uh, what they call public right-of-way sidewalks, curb ramps, intersections, anything that needs to be, uh, ADA accessible. Back in ninety-two, it appears that the city did start that process, they put a plan together, um, in nineteen ninety-three. And, um, it was a draft plan, the, the plans, uh, one of the tasks is you have to have different policies in place, identify an ADA coordinator and then identify all of those deficiencies. Uh, this plan didn't get very far, it didn't have an ADA coordinator, um, identified. And, um, it had basically only assessed buildings and there was six buildings that were assessed. Um, after my day-long site visit, um, we also looked at aerial imaging for the streets, the intersections you have. Um, the city has, uh, about twenty-eight properties that have, uh, access to public or public programming that need review for ADA accessibility. Um, additionally, based upon our survey, um, you have over sixty miles of sidewalk that need to be surveyed and, um, approximately two hundred and forty intersections. All of this needs to be assessed in the field. Um, for instance, each building to go through the ADA accessibility checklist for that building is approximately, it's actually over eighty pages to go through checklist for each building. Um, there's a similar checklist for each intersection sidewalks. So, um, at the request of the city, uh, we went through and developed what it would take for us to, to get working on this, develop a plan. There's public meetings that, um, are incorporated into this as well as the plan implementation schedule and we work with the, uh, assigned ADA coordinator to move forward. There was a survey letter sent out about a couple of months ago and what NDOT is asking now, it's a pre-award certification for your upcoming project. They ask you to fill out this survey and one of the first things identified in that is, um, do you have the ADA plan? And, um, we are in contact with, uh, NDOT as recently as today. Um, saying you've got about two days to get this survey in, which is just a questionnaire about the city and where they're at. You need to make sure that is submitted in the next couple of days, which we've agreed to assist the city with getting that submitted, getting the questions answered. Um, but failure to do this and potentially have the plan in place may impact the, the funding of your upcoming project.
It's a two point five million dollar federal grant project, we can't afford to lose it. So, we're, we're pushing real hard, the problem is to do this survey, you're looking at about ninety-two thousand dollars. I, Julie got back today and I went into her office this morning, I waited a little bit till she was. Had her coffee and I, I told her what we were up against and she said, where are we gonna get that money?
Actually, he walked in and I said, isn't this a typo?
So I've talked with Jason and Jason's willing to do this in increments, get our plan moving over the next year. Pay him or his company Strand in increments until we get this thing paid for. Get it into NDOT and then over the next year as this plan will be implemented, we don't know how fast it'll be required. Uh, it can't be too fast because all cities are in the same trouble, but we've got to have the plan. And in two days, we've got to have the sheet, we've got to have an ADA coordinator. I have a volunteer, Ronnie Coldiron on the Board of Works, said he would be the, uh, ADA coordinator, he's interested in that. We can't expect him to do it for free because it's a big job, you'll have to appropriate some money for him to do it. But, uh, we have to have ones, Comersville City has to have one in place unless one of, well, you can't be, none of you can be, it's against the law for you guys to do it. But a Board of Works member can do it or other employee, a fireman. You know, somebody that's into safety, but we gotta do it.
Mr. Mayor.
Yeah.
Jason, who is Strand and Associates?
We're a civil engineering firm.
Engineering firm?
Yes, yes.
We've done business with them, they did the Milton Project for us, they just recently, uh, engineered all the blowers and motors down at the.
The raw, uh, pumping and motor controls for the wastewater plant.
Okay.
They've done this for other cities and they know what they're doing.
Well, when I talked to you Friday, I think it was, for a couple of minutes, the mayor ran this by me about the. State of kind of holding us hostage, so to speak. Now, the ninety-two or ninety-three, that's for engineering firms?
Correct, that's for us to do all the field work, evaluate every one of your buildings, all of your sidewalks, all of your intersections and develop the actual plan. That identifies all the deficiencies, prioritizes them, um, assigns a cost to them and then we work with the city to show that. Here's an implementation schedule in your plan that says these are our deficiencies and this is the timeline, we're gonna accomplish this.
And then, Mr. Mayor, you said, you said something about Ron Coldiron?
Ron said, well, we took this Board of Works because they had to adopt it, then sent it on to you for funding, which they did. He would be willing to be the ADA coordinator, we'd have to go up with salary ordinance for him because he'll have to work for the next, what, eighteen months?
However long you guys, um, decide you want to do as far as completing it, we feel that if, um, if, if, if it's scheduled driven based upon NDOT. Um, we can get it done in December, um, we've got several weeks of field work, um, we can get going as early as late this week and get field staff out here to start doing the measurements. Um, there's a series of public hearings, different steps and, you know, checkpoints along the way. Um, we can, we can spread this out based upon your allocation, your schedule.
Well, NDOT will let us spread this out over here once we get the process right.
I, you know, that's one thing I don't have confirmation on, I think the first step is you get an agreement saying we are working on it and you tell them that we have an engineer on, on, uh, on staff. And they're developing, they're updating the current plan. From there, we can work within your schedule.
So, Mr. Mayor?
Yeah.
Basically, we really don't have a choice, basically. Julie, we're gonna get the money.
I wish I knew.
Grant?
Well, I'll take it out of the general fund, but. I really don't want to be there.
John, is there any way we'd be allowed to use the money in that fund? That we have, the, no way?
I'm not sure what fund.
Down Smalley Lake.
That's not, that's to do with environmental.
I don't think that's, no.
We can look into it.
Have we got any restricted funds anyplace that fit the bill?
Got money in Q cap, couple of Q cap funds.
See, they put this on you.
Well.
We have a choice because we, we got two point five million pending right now. That's where we'll have to take it, John. Could we do this, could we pay you over a year's time?
I think so, I, I think the question is, um, how, do you still want it completed in the three months, is that what you're looking at?
What will you do for us?
I need to go back and figure out what my company will let me do as far as spreading it out, but I think we can work something out that works for the, you, let me know what your monthly limitation is.
Five bucks. We could have to charge the state anyway to see how, how long they'll give us, right?
Um, yeah, well, I want to be careful how we approach that because it's supposed to be in place right now. I think the first thing is we'll get that survey sent in, say we're working on it and then, uh, find out what type of timeline you're gonna be restricted against.
Some cities have got this done, a good many cities are just in the process. One city, and I don't want to mention any names tonight, got caught and now they have an agreed order, they've been told what they're gonna do.
And we're working with that city and, um, they're under an agreed order with the Department of Justice and that makes things even more complicated. Because now they're in charge of the plan, the schedule, and they're calling the shots and they are kind of in a similar situation and, um. It is challenging and the other challenging thing is this, this has come about and, um, there is no grant money available to do these, these plans, so.
Well, they have you because if we don't do it, we don't get our money.
And we.
And we need it.
And we're doing grants on a lot of federal projects.
Well, and it jeopardizes future money.
So, I have a question.
Sure.
Talked about implementation plan, what's the, what's the timeframe that usually? Because, I mean, this is ninety thousand, but I'm thinking implementation will be far greater.
Sure, sure, I think it all depends upon the size of the city, the, um, you put a justification together, we'll sit down with AD coordinator. Um, first we got to identify what are your, your access barriers and, you know, assign them per area, per sidewalk, building. And come up with a, a cost for these and then we'll sit down with you and, you know, sometimes they're five years, sometimes they're ten years or more. It, it's all variable, but we'll sit down and, and come up with a schedule that works for both entities, both the city and the, the agency that's requiring it.
Let me tell you this, we went through all the buildings, I spent a day with them. A lot of the buildings are already somewhat ADA compliant. We did the Roberts Building, the restrooms are ADA compliant, the elevators ADA compliant. In this building, pretty much a lot of the bathrooms are ADA compliant.
A lot of sidewalks aren't though.
Not the sidewalks.
A lot of sidewalks will need those curb ramps, um, several.
Sidewalks, the new ones have curb ramps.
There was a few newer facilities, some of your parks that needed some, some upgrades just from our, you know, we did a, basically a cursory walkthrough through all the buildings. For instance, your soccer complex, um, you know, that's all new complex and everything, but one of the things with ADA is you have to have a, I forget how it's worded, a slip resistant, resistant path from your parking lot. To the concessioner facility and right now you have a gravel lot with grass to a concrete patio around your, your concession. So that, see, that would be something to be an implementation plan to get that access to where people would go to watch the soccer facilities.
They measure how hard it is to open a door with a machine and it's gotta be so easy. They, or you gotta make it that way.
You gotta adjust the door closer or change the door style, measure dimensions for, uh, access, um, in, through doorways, in, uh, bathroom stalls. Um, we have levels where we check the slopes of sidewalks, intersections. You know, a good half of this effort is gonna be, you'll see our staff running around town, uh, compiling all this, going through the huge amounts of checklist, they've done this in a handful of other communities. Um, they can really move through it.
So, your honor, basically, we really don't have a choice to, to protect that federal money.
Well, in the future too, uh, future, future councils are gonna have to have this done or they can't get any federal money.
So we're gonna.
Almost all of our grants come federal.
So first things first, we're gonna have to take action on this.
I suggest you take it out of Q cap, we asked for an additional appropriation, we have to advertise it.
Julie, is that?
That's what I would, I don't want to take it out of the general fund.
What if, you talk to your company, what if we paid it in two, part this year and part next year?
Okay.
Talk to your company.
Sure. I think we can.
Motion to advertise for additional. Yeah, go ahead.
I know we have to do this, but what I don't understand is why we didn't know about it before.
Probably my fault.
Sorry, I didn't, I've been trying to play some lines.
If I knew it, I forgot it. And like I say, they didn't make a big issue to it until I got the email the other day wondering.
It's just such a shock what, you know?
I don't remember it, let's just not in here, I don't remember doing anything.
You know, and you know, when you look at it and we've seen this is similar in different communities, you know, when this all came out and the plans were put together in the early nineties. You know, it's as far as it got in a lot of times and no one was reminding them of the responsibilities, if you didn't assign a coordinator, this got sat up on a shelf.
I didn't even know we had that ninety-two, ninety-three.
Yeah, Melissa found it when we were, uh, talking about it, but it, yeah, it's one of those things that got set on a shelf and it didn't get talked about for a long time and communities maybe. Yeah, it slipped through the cracks, but now that, starting two thousand twelve, NDOT was sending out letters. Um, failure to have a transition plan may result in a deferral of your construction projects or impact funding availability. Um, it's now on everyone's radar that this needs to be a priority.
Almost all cities are in the same buying ring, they haven't got it, there's a few cities got it done.
You want a motion on?
We'll have to have.
Okay.
Well, are we gonna appropriate the whole amount for now?
No, we'll appropriate half and then after the first, the other half, this company will restore.
Sure, I, I think I can safely say that.
Yes. Julie, you want to, that I got a Q cap fund?
Yeah.
I would like to put that in the form of a motion for ninety, how much was it?
Half of ninety-two.
You, you want half of?
Ninety-three.
Ninety-three, I thought it was ninety-two.
That's ninety-three.
You're trying.
You and I will have to have a man, man, dog.
Ninety-one sounds better.
It's in black and white, I'm gonna think you'll do it.
I thought it was this ninety-three hundred, I just thought.
Well, I got the same comment, I think a lot of people were, uh, unaware of the level of effort it involves. And I can work with, um, work with Julie about the, the actual accounting aspect of it.
Okay, so, your motion is to add, try to provide for a public hearing for half of the ninety-two this year and we'll get started. If you talk with NDOT, I'd like to make this a little easier, maybe we can.
Sure.
Squeeze something out.
Can we get somebody to second that motion?
Second.
Did Jason second it or did you? We have a motion and a second on the floor to, uh, ask for additional appropriation, have a public hearing on this, uh, Q cap fund for half of the ninety-two thousand dollars. For the next meeting, which will be the sixteenth of September. Are you ready for the question, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carried. All right, we got that covered, give them a hold.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Listen, Jason, we, we've got two days to get that thing in.
I will, uh, I've already got an email drafted and I'm working to work with your staff, I'll get in that.
Do you have to have my signature?
Mr. Mayor?
Is it your signature, I think it's actually an OPA signature. So it'll be, I'll work through it and I'll be in contact.
But don't bother Diana, you let me talk to her because she's going through this with her sister.
No, I will not bother Diana.
But I mean, I can, I can get her to sign it and send it to you.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, you, you had mentioned Ron Coldiron, which I think is great, now, the council doesn't get involved, is that?
Yeah, you'll have to, uh, you'll have to make a salary ordinance for him.
You and Julie have to get with him and get something worked out and then.
We don't even know what he's gonna do.
But I, I think it's a great, him as an ADA coordinator.
Get, get me something on what that coordinator's gonna do, how many hours he gotta work and everything.
Yep, I'll get you like a description of what his responsibilities will be.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, I see Holly Dunn come back in here if you guys come to a conclusion.
Yeah.
Come on up here.
See, um, I guess she suggested that, um, she'll just take a two thousand dollar donation and she'll worry about the tables later. She wants her chairs all matching, but the hard plastic, they're a lot more durable for the kids. So my, my only other option was, um, request her two thousand dollars and, or two thousand dollars, appropriate, appropriate me a thousand dollars to buy eight, uh, eight foot, ten eight-foot tables. And I could replace my old eight-foot tables and give her the old ones.
She just wants the money, go.
Or just two thousand dollars and she can figure it out herself.
Okay, counsel, you heard it. It just can't be three thousand dollars because you can't consider the same motion in the same.
But she say for the tables would be another thousand. So, I move to appropriate three thousand and one dollars for the Haven.
Is that legal, John?
Yep.
Okay, we'll just start the same motion.
Second. No.
We have a motion on the floor to appropriate three thousand and one dollars out of the Riverboat Fund to the fuel, are we still calling it fuel?
Yeah, well, fuel is one part of it, the Haven is the.
The Haven.
Now, I'm confused, are we appropriating to give them two thousand and to buy tables for my?
Yeah, we'll make three thousand and one dollars to her, period.
Just let me figure it out.
No.
No, two thousand.
And a thousand to buy tables for the park.
Well, we talked about, you know, the common thing here in the past year was give the groups two thousand dollars. Coming in and asking, remind them usually getting two thousand dollars, that she would request that and then she would take care of the chairs. Then I just kinda said, well, if that happens, then maybe I can get two thousand dollars to replace them our eight-foot tables.
Okay, so.
Get her your old eight-foot tables.
All right, Mr. Mayor, withdraw my motion, I got a new motion.
I moved to two thousand dollars for her, I think, and that's what we're supposed to be doing for chairs.
Okay, we, Gabe wants my motion.
I moved to, uh, appropriate two thousand dollars for chairs for the Haven.
That's perfect. Period.
Period.
I mean, that's all, I have a second motion and second.
Okay, is there a second to that motion?
Mike, and that's where you're happy with that, right?
Yeah, I mean.
Second.
She's not happy with those, I don't think she'll be happy with those chairs in the long run, just because of kids and their phone and they already got some rips already starting and I think with them six.
Okay.
Kids will, kids will tear them up.
We got a motion on the floor, two thousand dollars to the Haven. Any discussion?
Nick?
And that's just four chairs?
It's whatever she go buy.
That's right.
Whatever she wants to buy.
It would be chairs.
We're donating it to her to do with the.
Yep, to the Haven. We're not gonna tell her what to do with it, right, Gabe, that's motion? Any discussion? Okay, roll call, go.
Councilman Weber?
Yes.
Councilman Shomel?
Yes.
Councilman Nobby?
Yes.
Councilwoman Montgomery?
Yes.
Councilman Creach?
Yes.
Councilwoman Stevens?
Yes.
Councilwoman Rich?
Yes.
Okay, you pass that unanimously, you get the two thousand dollars.
Got a motion.
We had to advertise for the.
We have to advertise to take that out of Riverboat, okay.
I have another motion. Uh, I move to appropriate a thousand dollars, is that correct, Mike? For eight tables?
Yep.
For the parks and those eight tables that will be replaced, given to the Haven. These tables are the round for.
No, it's long.
Long, tall, cafeteria tables for you.
Yeah, the long eight-foot tables.
Is that gonna be all right?
We'll make it work.
You'd rather do that?
We're gonna have to go to Egypt to get the cafeteria tables.
You don't want to go to Egypt.
I mean, you just have to, they don't ship.
Well, they actually do if you call them.
Okay, I mean, okay, okay, is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Got a motion and a second, that, uh, thousand dollars then be used in the park to buy new tables and ten tables will give them to Holly Dunn from the park once those tables come in. Which Michael gave him after we appropriated, well, you can go ahead and order them.
How many tables are we, like?
Ten.
Oh, and ten.
Ten for a thou?
I think I can get them for that.
Those are eight-foot, forty tables.
Right.
It's a hundred dollars a table?
Yeah.
Wow.
I got connections.
Good.
Guido.
Okay, we have a second on it, any discussion?
Show and property.
Any discussion?
As long as we don't know.
I have a roll call.
As long as we don't know.
Councilman Shomel?
Yes.
Councilman Nobby?
Yes.
Councilwoman Montgomery?
Yes.
Councilman Creach?
Yes.
Councilwoman Stevens?
Yes.
Councilwoman Rich?
Yes.
Councilman Weber?
Yes.
You have passed that unanimously, I think we got the tables and chairs taken care of, Holly Dunn.
Thank you guys, I really appreciate all of, all of you and what you do.
Thank you.
Thank you, Holly.
You coordinate everything with Mike, he'll work it out for you.
Okay, and I come back?
You really don't need to be here on the sixteenth, but if you want to be, it'll be fine because there'll be a public hearing, if there'll be somebody out there object to it, it would be better if you were here in favor of it. I dealt with it will be, but it might be.
Yeah, you'll be okay.
Okay? Thank you. We're not making very good time. Resolution, uh, twenty thirteen dash forty-four reimbursement, this will go back.
Can we take it together?
Yeah, yeah, we can take resolution, they're all reimbursements all the way down to, let's take C, D, and E. Resolution twenty thirteen forty-four, forty-five, forty-six inclusive, all receiving money back.
I make that motion.
Got a motion and a second, we accept those resolutions. Uh, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion so, that's carried. Pending ordinance thirty forty-seven, ordinance would authorize issuance of pool bond. This is the thing I've been telling you about. That we are doing to refinance the pool. Uh, this was prepared by, uh, London Thornburg, this is just the first step in refinancing it. At this point, I can't tell you exactly what the savings is gonna be, but they are going to, it's gonna be a significant saving, so this is the first step in approving it. Rick Hall said he would have come down here tonight and explained to you, I said, no, we don't want to pay you. And we're gonna do it, stay home and we'll do it. And, uh, you know what it costs to get a lawyer to drive down here?
Yeah.
Okay, so I'd like for you to pass pending ordinance thirty forty-seven and, uh, we'll get this pool bond refinanced in the works, anything you want to say about it, John?
Only, you know, the title explains it. Uh, it's, it's an ordinance of the city of Comersville authorizing issuance of bonds for the purpose of providing funds to refinance its economic development income tax revenue bonds of two thousand four.[1791.82] and pay incidental expenses in connection there with, and on account of the issuance of the bonds, I think that's enough of a.
The reading title only gives you the gist of what it's all about.
I wanna be perfectly clear, this is an economic development bond, and it's an economic development project. However, when we did this, I was on the council, Fran was on the council, Weber was on the council, I think that's it. We did this, we had to do a backup with property tax, just in case the Edit Fund didn't come up with it. So when someone tries to tell you this is not an Edit project, that's wrong, it is an Edit bond, that's what it's for, that's where we get the money to pay it. We're refinancing it to try to bring it down and save money, which, that's what we should be, it's just no different than you refinancing your home. So, I'd like for you to consider pending ordinance thirty forty-seven.
Make the motion.
Second.
We got a motion on the floor, is there any discussion?
I think it's a good deal.
Okay, none appearing, we'll have a roll call vote.
Councilman Nobby?
Yes.
Councilwoman Montgomery?
Yes.
Councilman Creach?
Yes.
Councilwoman Stevens?
Yes.
Councilwoman Rich?
Yes.
Councilman Weber?
Yes.
Councilman Shomel?
Yes.
You have passed that unanimously, would you like to suspend, suspend rules and move on and pass?
Second.
Okay, on pending ordinance thirty forty-seven, to refinance the pool under an economic development bond, uh, on suspension of rules only, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carried, you can move forward.
Some move, second.
We have a motion on the floor to consider pending ordinance thirty forty-seven to refinance the pool under this authorized, uh, income tax, Fed Edit Tax Pool Bond. Uh, any discussion? None appearing, we'll have a roll call vote.
Councilwoman Montgomery?
Yes.
Councilman Creach?
Yes.
Councilwoman Stevens? Councilwoman Rich?
Yes.
Councilman Weber?
Yes.
Councilman Shomel?
Yes.
Councilman Nobby?
Yes.
Okay, you have passed that unanimously, so that, we'll go back to Rick Hall, and we'll be in the process. We got them December to get that done, so it's not a big issue, but this is the first step. Okay, pending ordinance thirty forty-eight, thirty forty-nine, I think we could take both of those together. Uh, it's a transfer, and it's four hundred and seventy-five from postage to minor equipment in the, uh, cable TV, and then we have, uh, three hundred and forty-nine ninety-nine from Pool Chemicals to other equipment in the park. If it's okay with you, we'll take both of those together.
Some move.
Second.
Okay, on pending ordinance thirty forty-eight and thirty forty-nine, both transfers. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, would you like to suspend the rules and move on?
Some move.
We have a motion to suspend the rules and consider pending ordinance thirty forty-eight and thirty forty-nine, both ordinances, transferring money within the budget. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carried. Pending ordinance? Thirty fifty.
No, we need thirty.
I thought that's what we did, I'm sorry. Okay, do I have a motion?
Send it.
All in favor, say, all, all in favor, say aye. I've tried to make up the time, you said you missed it, I didn't learn anything.
Take that gavel away.
Pending ordinance thirty fifty, this ordinance is an additional appropriation from the General Fund, uh, City Hall Electricity, uh, Council twenty-three, uh, thousand six hundred and ten insurance, and, uh, Fire two thousand five hundred. Uh, this is for medical exams and DOT sixteen thousand for gasoline, we'll open a public hearing on that. Anybody out there like to discuss anything about those transfers or those additional appropriations? Anybody? Three times. None appearing, we'll close the public hearing, like the record show we had it. We'll consider pending ordinance thirty fifty on first reading.
Your honor?
Yes.
What's council insurance?
Goes for everything that we insure.
Okay.
It's, most of it's additional insurance on the vesti.
Okay.
It's actually coming close, isn't it?
Hopefully.
Is that gonna be enough for fuel for the rest of the year, do you project, or no?
That's for DOT. I hope.
For them, it should make it for the rest of the year.
We're hoping.
When it says gasoline, it's fuel, right, not just?
Gasoline for the trucks and stuff, yeah. Mostly diesel for the, uh, transport.
Somebody make a motion?
I would accept pending ordinance thirty fifty.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor to consider pending ordinance thirty fifty on first reading. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Would you like to suspend the rules and consider it on third and final read?
Some move, second.
On suspension of rules on thirty, pending ordinance thirty fifty, uh, suspension of rules only, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None appearing, we can go on to third and final read.
Some move, second.
We have a motion for third and final read on pending ordinance number thirty fifty, which would be, uh, final reading. Any discussion? None appearing, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carried. Pending ordinance thirty fifty-one, this ordinance is additional appropriation, uh, for the park, for a part-time clerical. We'll put a public hearing, it's an additional appropriation for five thousand dollars for a part-time clerical in the park. We use those people in the office, we use those people at night, they're all part-time people, to, uh, watch the buildings, take care of things, when we have a lot of things going. I think they told me last weekend, we had Friday, Saturday, both buildings, and Sunday, all, all buildings full. Which is great, you asked how many times we were gonna use the four-H building, we're using it on a regular basis. On pending ordinance, uh, thirty fifty-one, what's your favor?
So, is this, uh, fifty, or five thousand, is this for additional, like, do we not?
We don't have enough money in there to pay the part-time.
Is it because we have, uh, we now are hiring other people to do the four-H building?
Not necessarily, we just didn't appropriate.
Basically, it covers Sharon's vacation over the summer, um, some of it, a little bit does the Roberts Building, but most of it's just over the summer.
Cover the events, too.
Cover events at the Roberts Building, just.
The more events you have, the more people you gotta hire for time.
Whenever we have anything in any, in the building, have somebody there.
I think it covers four people, that's how that money.
This is the end of the year? Will it get us to the end of the year?
I think it should. I'm trying to figure it out.
Although December's heavy in Christmas parties, and I look for both buildings, in fact, Sharon told me the other day, we've booked our first wedding reception in the Roberts Building, it's coming up here in a few weeks. What's your favor on pending ordinance thirty fifty-one?
I'd like to make a motion, you pass pending ordinance three zero five one.
Second.
You have a second, you got a second. On pending ordinance thirty fifty-one, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carried, would you like to suspend the rules?
Some move, second.
On suspension of rules on, considering pending ordinance thirty fifty-one, suspension of rules only, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carried, would you like to move forward?
Some move.
Got a motion to consider pending ordinance thirty fifty-one on third and final read, that motion would put five thousand dollars in part-time clerical in the park. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carried. Pending ordinance thirty fifty-two, additional appropriation from the Edit Fund, sixty-seven thousand eight hundred and ninety-four dollars. That is the sale of the Pramco property, we got that money from Refamed Energy, and we are now transferring that to Economic Development. The agreement was four years ago, that they would fund all the expenses, which they did, and when the building and the property sold, we would give them the proceeds of the money. They have a tremendous amount of expense against this, taking the tanks out, phase one, two, three times, uh, cleaning up two other tanks, oh, I can't.
They paid for the, tear the building.
Tear the building down. So, a good bit of this is all eaten up in expense, and now we're turning the rest of the money over to them, as we promised we would do four years ago. So we have to have an additional appropriation, we have to have a public hearing. Everybody understand what we're doing? Turning that money over, because they paid all the expense, it was a brownfield cleanup that we initiated four years ago.
They're putting up a fence, I noticed, several steel poles.
They just got permission to do that from IDIM, in order to cut through that concrete, they gotta have permission from IDIM. Is there a? Go ahead. Anybody else? Public hearing closed, council, what's your consideration?
I move pending ordinance thirty fifty-two, you pass on first read.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to consider pending ordinance thirty fifty-two, which, uh, is additional appropriation in the Edit Fund, going for sixty-seven thousand eight hundred and nine four dollars and sixty-six cents, which will be given to the Economic Development Group. Any discussion? I hate to throw you like that, but it's a lot of money, I think we better do that.
Councilman Creach?
Yes.
Councilwoman Stevens?
Yes.
Councilwoman Rich?
Yes.
Councilman Weber?
Yes.
Councilman Shomel?
Yes.
Councilman Nobby?
Yes.
You have passed that.
Councilwoman Montgomery?
Yes.
Yeah, pass that on. I never know where she started. You have passed that on first read, would you like to suspend the rules and consider it on third and final?
Some move. Fran, grab that gavel.
Second.
I will admit it.
We have a motion and a second to, uh, suspend the rules and consider pending ordinance thirty fifty-two on third and final read, on suspension of rules only, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? None, we can go on to third and final read.
Some move.
We have a motion. And a second to consider pending ordinance thirty fifty-two, this ordinance would, uh, put sixty-seven thousand eight hundred and ninety-four dollars, sixty-six cents of the Pramco money back to the Economic Development Group for the expenses of the cleanup. Uh, any discussion? Roll call vote.
Councilwoman Stevens?
Yes.
Councilwoman Rich?
Yes.
Councilman Weber?
Yes.
Councilman Shomel?
Yes.
Councilman Nobby?
Yes.
Councilwoman Montgomery?
Yes.
Councilman Creach?
Yes.
All in favor, you have passed that, we'll issue that, Jack. Thank you so much, old business. Anybody have any old business?
Your honor? That lady right there has something on old business.
You have to bring it up. Come on up. Is she a member of your, uh, no, she's, I know who she is.
No, she's on the south end, she, she stopped me at the store the other day.
I think we're working on that, and, uh, David is on vacation, but I think the Red House?
Yep.
We're working on it, I mean, uh, where are we going?
Well, let's see, I had to publish notice in the newspaper for three consecutive weeks. And, uh, we can take a judgment thirty days after the last publication, and that, I believe my calendar shows that judgment can be taken the second week of September. And once the judgment is taken, uh, the court orders thirty days to give the property owner a chance to rehabilitate the property, and if they don't, then the city can do what's necessary to bring the property into compliance with the ordinance, nuisance ordinance, including demolition if necessary.
Okay. Well, somebody's took the siding off at the east side of the house in the back.
Looked like the wind cut the roof off, too, didn't it?
Yeah. But somebody got, gave somebody permission to take the siding off.
They're our owners of the property, they could do that.
So best case scenario, you're looking at November?
Well, thirty days after the second week in September.
They're like, they're like October.
October. That house, we can take down ourselves.
Okay.
Once we get the, uh, court order, we'll, we'll fix it.
Okay. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other old business?
Yeah, uh, I wanna address something Mr. Nobby's been concerned about regarding the, uh, railroad right-of-way. One, one factor is, uh, the owner of the business has been ill, and she was working on it, but, but I sense that we only authorized five hundred dollars to pay for that project there, and that really isn't gonna cover it. It's, it's, it's a, quite a bit of research into the records to try to ascertain ownership of a right-of-way, such as a railroad right-of-way, and I would, to get the job done, I think you ought to consider, uh, pro, uh, authorizing more money to pay for.
How much?
That's a good, but, uh, we, I'm, I'm, I'm asking them how much it's gonna take might be the next step, and then we'll go from there, we can ascertain that relatively quickly. But it's, it's not getting done, and I know that's not making you happy, so I think we need to give them, uh, some more money, and, and it's not their fault, but, you know, they have a lot of work to do, and they better, they've gotta, uh, kind of, do what they can, when they can, and that kind of thing, it's, it's, it's a difficult project.
How much you talking about, John?
Well, uh, you know, I haven't talked to Jane about that specifically, but I would say, uh, oh, I can, I can find out and let you know.
We have some money in the council budget where we could do that. So, get a price for us and bring it back to us.
Well, all right, I could do that, or you could authorize up to a certain amount.
Have we already spent our five hundred, you think?
Well, I don't know what they.
We actually have money appropriated, so what you need to do is get a price, and then if it's within the budget, we can pay it.
All right, I'll do that tomorrow.
Okay. Just keep it low.
That's what we did before, we didn't get anything done, so.
Do you know at what stage they're at?
They're having trouble, it, it's a difficult job.
Okay.
Yeah, it, it really is.
How many property owners you talking about?
Oh, my, it's all, all the way along the right-of-way on each side, you know, it's, it's, it's difficult.
All right, miscellaneous business, Nancy?
No.
Tom?
Yes, I do. I, I have an opportunity to embarrass my grandson. My grandson is eighteen years old today, happy birthday Chandler. Thank you.
Happy birthday, you want us to sing?
I think I do.
Eddie?
I don't have anything.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Fran?
None, fine, thanks.
Dr. Weber?
Well, thank you.
Counsel? Mr. Baker, do you have anything special besides that you wanna?
No, sir.
It's unusual that you ask for money.
Oh, I know, right? It's, I'm not, they have to.
Mike, you have something on miscellaneous business, come forth. Oh, yes.
The mower thing.
I got more bad, I got more bad news, we blew up one of our good mower, uh, it was old, but, but they went, they went out and got some prices, and the, uh, Boarder Works approved a, uh, quote today, we have four quotes, and he's got a real good quote, go ahead and tell him what you got.
Yeah, um, with the Boarder Works, uh, gave him four quotes, a John Deere fifteen-five, a Kubota, uh, from Rogan Equipment eleven-six, a Zimmer tractor Kubota, same one, it's a different company, eleven-nine, and a Toro, a Toro about sixteen-nine, um, so I guess I'm here to get approval for additional appropriation for a new mower. We're going, I like to go with eleven-six, which is the lowest bid for the Rogan Equipment, it was the Slay Model two thousand thirteen, the two-fourteens are coming in, and, uh, he'd like to get rid of it, um.
It's brand new.
The Zimmer, even though it's the same identical, they don't have them on hand, they have to order one, so that's why it's just a little bit more, but it is the same mower, so.
What kind of mower is this?
It's a Kubota, uh, ZD, yeah, sixty-inch diesel.
Diesel.
Thirty-four horsepower.
How much is it?
It's a Skidoo. It's a Skid.
Uh, 11-6. Right now, we have a Toro that's 18 years old, another one that's 12, a Kubota that's broke down, was 10, and our newest mower is 7 years old.
The reason we, we kind of stick with the Kubota, Phil likes to keep the Kubota. He's got parts for it and he likes working on it.
Now, I ask how much does it cost?
11-6, this one.
You can come and get my tractor at home and then we'll appropriate money for me to get a brand-new tractor.
That's your overword. See, I use that gavel. You asked for that, Weber. You asked for that. The Board of Works has approved 11-6. What we need to do is fund it and I suggest we fund it out of Riverboat. So I need a motion.
Which we do for equipment.
Nancy got a motion. Is there a second? A motion and a second that we buy the 11-6 Kubota, 34 horsepower for Rogan Equipment. There's nobody in Connersville that sells the Kubotas, so that's why we have to do that. Any discussion?
This is advertising it.
Advertise for a public hearing on additional appropriation.
Current newest one's seven years old, right?
Yes.
The newest one's seven.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Is there anybody opposed?
Is this without a treaty or the treaty?
Without the treaty.
It's okay, I'm hard here.
We use a board, guys, every time. How many acres we cut in '33?
About 200 acres total. We don't bode just Roberts Park. Roberts Park's like 70 acres. We have all those other soccer fields, baseball fields, office, industrial, smallings.
Okay, we'll have additional appropriation for next time on that. Anything else? Anybody got anything in public form? Ruby, Ruby.
I just want to thank Matt, Mike Selkey. We're doing always good work and I'd like to know this new guy that's head of the thing. I'd like for him to introduce himself.
My name's Kevin Couch. I've done sports for WIFE, now WLPK for four years now, I guess. And I took over for Mike.
Good. Mike said a good job and we're missing. He said a good job and we're going to miss it. I know he's laying around doing nothing. Congratulations.
His oldest son is in Northern California right now, so he is hard at work, but it's just on personal stuff.
Yeah, that's good. That's all I ask.
Thanks, Ruby. Ruby, your orchard looks nice.
Oh, yes.
What are you going to do when it frosts?
Go somewhere. Do something.
It was interesting today at the Lions Club, Ruby. Those people, you might mention those people that retired from Visteon have some money coming. We just found out that they get $45 a year. Do you want to expound on that? Maybe there's some people out there.
Well, I don't know. I just got about 20 calls today and I don't know. They'll have to check. I'll, I'll have to check it out.
Okay. Well, there are several people who already got it.
Yeah, yeah.
But there is some money available, so call Ruby.
Thank you very much. If you call me, don't get excited if I'm not home because I do not have a job at doing this. And a lot of people does get mad. They'll say, well, you've been, we've been trying to get a house saved. I'm not there.
Is there any place they can call to find out about that?
Yes, Visteon Center.
Okay, where's that?
I can give you the telephone number.
Let's get that and put it in the paper, will you? Because there's a, there's a benefit. We just found out that people have not retired.
They haven't been paying the full amount or they've been taking, not taking, not paying as the full amount.
But they're paying something, so.
Yeah, they're paying something, but it's...
But you had to retire at a certain date. What is that date?
I don't know. It, no, you have to be retired from it, but it has to be so long.
And you have to be 65 years old.
Yes.
But give them the number after the meeting here, Ruby, and put that in the paper.
But I appreciate if they would call, because I don't run businesses out of my house.
I thought you knew all about it.
Well, I, I can help and I have help, but you really get thrown over the poles if you don't know the answer. And if I don't know the answer, you're not going to get it from me. I'll say, no, I don't know.
But there is a Visteon number. Those are the people that might think they're eligible for that money can go to. Okay. That's the end of public forum then. Nobody else wanted to speak? Rex, do you want to speak?
All right.
Okay. I'm up to adjournment unless you folks have something. Got a motion on the floor to adjourn. All those in favor say aye. All opposed, meeting adjourned.